All right. Thank you all for joining us. I am going to call to order the January 24th, 2023 Board of Education for Columbia Heights Public Schools for our meeting. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mary, will you do the roll call, please?
Absolutely. Maderas?
Here.
Petway?
Here.
Hul?
Here.
Granland?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Superintendent Stenbik?
Here.
Great, thank you. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We next have our agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence, starting with our approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Jessica, in a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries. Next, we have our announcements. On January 30th, Monday, there is no school. On Tuesday, February 14th, at 5:00 p.m., we have the Subcommittee on Policy here in the Community Room. On Tuesday, February 14th, at 7:00 p.m., there's a regular School Board meeting here in the Community Room. On February 20th, Monday, there is no school. February 21st, Tuesday, it's actually at 5:00 p.m., there is a time change as our School Board work session here in the Community Room. And on Jan— excuse me, February 28th, Tuesday at 7:00 p.m., is the regular School Board meeting here in the Community Room. Next, we have correspondence. Superintendent Stenbik, is there any correspondence?
Madam Chair, there's no correspondence at this time.
Great, thank you. Next, we have our citizen and employee representatives. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The Board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The Board will not take action at this meeting on request presented at this time. I do have one person who's filled out a card so far. Okay.
We got thumbs up.
Great, thank you. Next on our agenda, we have the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report from January 24th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mary, in a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next, we have our acknowledgement of contributions. This is a resolution, and so I will read this and then ask for a motion to move this forward. It's not loading, so give me one second. Backup paper copy. All right, our acknowledgement of contributions resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the Board may act as a trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District Number 13, that the School Board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $11,497.62. The background is as follows. Monetary. A donation of $500 was made to Valley View Elementary by Karen and Andrew Johnson for Peg Nelson and Katie Becker's classes. A donation of $50 was made to Valley View Elementary by Clarice and William Cook in honor of their grandmother, Karma Doge. A donation of $50 was made to North Park School for Innovation by Zach Garman for student needs. A donation of $50 was made to Columbia Academy by Carol Whitney for student needs. A donation of $20 was made to Valley View Elementary by Anonymous for student needs. A donation of $25 was made to Columbia Heights Public School by Karma Doge for student needs. A donation of $50 was made to Valley View Elementary by Stephanie Broom for student needs. A donation of $100 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Bob Bessemer for student needs. A donation of $115 was made to Columbia Academy by Nicholas Roney for student needs. A donation of $55.86 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Alyssa Lyon for student needs. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights Public Schools student—oh, excuse me—Public Schools Reduce Student Food Service Debt Fund. Sarah Robertson—Robinson, $30. Gina Anderson, $200. Anonymous, $250. Anonymous, $100. The following donations were made to Columbia Heights High School for the New York Studies Seminar. Nika Arbal—Howbal, please forgive that name—in honor of Bondo Niemwe, $100. Mike Weir, $25. TBD Foods LLC, $210. Noodles &amp; Companies Company, $138.16. And Monarch Bus Service, $250. The following donations were made by the Columbia Heights Athletic Booster Club to the Activities Department for the following. $750 for boys soccer. $2,500 for boys basketball. $1,500 for girls basketball. $500 for wrestling. $500 for dance team. $50 for food for musical cast. $1,828.60 for the speech team. Also included are values and kind. Donation of winter outerwear was made to the Columbia Heights Public Schools by Hope Community Church for student needs, estimated value of $400. Donation of winter outerwear was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Columbia Heights Police Department for student needs, estimated value of $700. Donation of winter outerwear was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Hope Community Church for student needs, estimated value of $400. And donation of winter outerwear was made to Valley View Elementary by Community UMC for student needs, estimated value of $50. Total fiscal year 2022-2023 monetary contributions to date, $69,000—excuse me, $69,658.89. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Motion by Laura, in a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment. It always floors me every time, just the amount of dedication that our community has for the whole student, everything from winter coats to helping out with the speech team and the cultural enrichment with the New York Seminar. So, as always, thank you so much.
Yeah. Mary?
I was gonna say pretty much the same thing. We're like so blessed, so blessed that—I mean, not—maybe not you so much having to read all of that, but gosh, what a hor—I mean, it's a great problem to have, right? So incredibly grateful to the community and everybody who continues to support our students and staff, so thank you.
Julie, I thought—did I—
Yeah, I was just gonna say, did we get two contributions of coats and such from Hope Community, so at two different times?
Yep, it looks like it appears that way, yep.
I just—because it was the same amount and everything, I was curious.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, since this is a resolution, Mary, can you call the roll, please? Maderas?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Hul?
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller? Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you. Next, we have our discussion reports and information items. First up is our reports from members of—the Board. We'll start with Mary.
All right, so I have a lot. I attended the work session last week and have also spoke with a number of staff, families, and students about different concerns around the—around the school district. I also attended the robotics meet this past weekend. It was semi-qualifiers for state. We had five different teams, grade six through ninth, which was kind of amazing. These kids worked really, really hard and were up against a lot of really, you know, well-funded teams, and they still did really well. These kids worked so hard and built some really amazing robots, and I know that it's only gonna continue to grow. I had an opportunity to volunteer at Columbia Academy today, which was also pretty fantastic. And then I have spoken with Superintendent Stenbik, Chair Mueller, and Director Petway over the past week, and I'm positive I left something out, so later on I may say, oh yeah, I did that too, so thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes, I'm trying to go over things like—why we—actually, it's been a really busy week. So I did attend, I believe, a couple of chair meetings, the work-study session last week. I also attended Heights Next, their annual conference, to hear about some of the great community events and opportunities that they have going on there, so it looks like it's gonna be a pretty involved year, and I look forward to seeing those things. I attended the community engagement Zoom meeting today, but unfortunately, we did not have anybody else come on, so we didn't do a whole lot of community engagement. So please, we really do want to hear from everybody and, you know, just let you know when we have those things coming up, and I think that's it. Oh, and—oh, excuse me. I also attended a 916 board meeting, and I do have some site visits if anybody is interested in. On Wednesday, the 15th, February 15th, there's gonna be building tours over at Metro Heights Academy and Carner Blue. And in March 22nd, there's gonna be the auditory program, Pancalo Education Center, and Bel Air, if you're interested in those. And then on the 12th of April, they're gonna have the Wells—the Wells North, South Campus, and the Quora Education Center. So certainly, any board members or representatives can certainly participate and see some of the great programming and the things that we're doing for our students. I definitely encourage, especially the local ones. Our kids go to all of these locations.
Laura, can you provide Superintendent Stenbik and Dawn that information so we can get it in the packet?
Yeah, I would normally say, come to me, but I can't—you know, it's—it has to all go through Dawn and Xena, so—but I definitely recommend, if you get a chance, to go out and see those buildings. They are amazing facilities, and they're really serving the needs of our stu—our highest need students.
Thank you, Laura. Jessica?
So I, of course, also attended the work session last week. I also attended Highland's PTO meeting last week and their family fun night last Friday, so they had a movie night for families over there. And then I also had conversations with Superintendent Stenbik and a variety of community members, including families and staff.
Thank you. Julie?
I attended our work session last week, and I am getting myself registered for some classes with the MSBA as the treasurer. It'd be good to know how to be the treasurer, and so that's pretty much what I've done this week.
Right, sounds good. Michelle?
So I also attended the work session last week. I am the co-parent facilitator of the Families of Color affinity group at North Park, and we had a meeting last Thursday in which Superintendent Stenbik and Executive Director Niemwe both were guests, and we also had another guest, Marcus Flynn of the Black Men Teach Program, who came, and it was awesome. It wasn't a huge turnout, but we are trying to get more parents involved, so that was great to have him come and speak, and we had two of the teachers over there, Mr. Minky and Mr. Lewis, who came and they spoke, and it was a really good eye-opener, so that was a great meeting. And I was just establishing connections as like the liaison to North Park and to the City Council. I went to their meeting last night, so that was nice to get to know them a little better. And I spoke with Member Granland there as my mentor, and she has been very helpful and very resourceful. She's so knowledgeable, so thank you guys for setting that up.
I did not pay her to say that.
I've learned a lot. No, I'm just joking. No, she's just—she's very helpful, and we have great conversations, and I'm learning a lot. But pretty much, that's all I've been doing, setting up a lot of those kind of responsibilities. And I'm also—I'm gonna have my one-hour meeting with Superintendent this Friday, so yeah.
Perfect. Great, don't ever say just, that was a—that was a nice question.
I've been at work.
Great, I'll give my report. I attended the chair meeting last week, as well as the work session with all of you. I had a meeting with Superintendent Stenbik and our presenters that will be leading our Board retreat on the 21st during our work session, so we had a planning meeting on that. I also had an opportunity to attend the adult prom that was put on by the class of 2023 Parents funding—raising money for the all-night party. That was a blast, so I thought that was such a great idea, and that was a lot of fun. They hosted that here at the VFW in town, so kudos to the parents who put that on. It was—it was really a lot of fun. Also, attended the chair meeting prior to this meeting, as well as Laura said, we had the community engagement session, which involved Laura and I and our tech person, so hopefully we can reach out to more of our community, and had conversations with Superintendent Stenbik and with Member Granland. Superintendent Stenbik, you report for us.
Yeah, brief report, thank you. As mentioned, I was able to attend the North Park School for Innovation Parent—and Families of Color affinity group. It really was great to connect with the families and the staff that attended that meeting. Thank you for hosting that. The district hosted another vaccine clinic that was well-attended. We did last week have some positive COVID cases, but rest assured, nothing compared to last year, but we are continuing to monitor that. Since the last board meeting, I also attended the Better Together Student Conference hosted by the Minnesota State High School League. We had a really great group of high school students attend, and they were able to engage with students across the state to generate ideas for how our athletics and activities can be more welcoming events. We're looking forward to a strong start to Semester Two on January 31st, and just a reminder to all that student attendance matters. We do see a significant impact on academic achievement, which is correlated to absenteeism, and it really is important to be in-school learning. I had conversations with Member Granland, met with Chair Mueller, and met with Member Maderas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, moving on, we have our legislative update, so I'd like to welcome to the front Senator Mary Kunisch, Representative Sandra Feist, and Representative Erin Hagel. Great, well, thank you very much for coming. We're excited to hear what you have for us, and I'm sure we'll have some questions for you as well. So I don't know if anyone in particular would like to start?
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for this invitation to be here. I'm State Senator Mary Kunisch. I represent St. Anthony Village, New Brighton, Columbia Heights and Hilltop, Spring Lake Park, and Fridley. This is my first four-year session in the Senate. I had two years before that, and then I was four years in the Minnesota House. But most importantly, I was an educator myself of 25 years, 20 of them as a library media specialist. Currently, I am the Chair of Education Finance in our state legislature in the Senate, so I have a pretty awesome task, as you can only imagine. And when you said you're taking some lessons on how to be a treasurer, I wish there were lessons on how to be the Chair of Education Finance, because it is—it's daunting, but it's really, really exciting to think that at this time in my life, I have an opportunity to make a really good, positive, lasting impression on our students in Minnesota after all those years of seeing it from the other side. And so I—I've been able to interact with a number of your students in the last couple of weeks. I think you failed to tell everybody.
I did. She's very sad that she's not here tonight, by the way.
So one of the first—one of my first committee meetings, I reached out to people all over the state and said, I'd like to hear the voice of the students. And so we had over, I think, 35 students that either zoomed in or their parent brought them to the—to the Capitol for a two-hour session, and we went, four minute, four minute, four minute, you know? And everybody was prepared, everybody was so eloquent, they spoke from the heart. We had not only Ms. Petway's daughter, is it Alexis?
Anita.
Anita, but we also had Abraham Zemet, who really spoke very, very passionately about the need for services and support for his—his teachers, but also advocated for his friend Milo, which I found especially touching. And then just yesterday, and I'm not gonna butcher your name, but Kristin and I set up Zoom meetings with her Native American students. So I saw one at Bright and Early at like 8:15 or 8:30 in the morning, and then one—another group a little bit later. I, myself, of Native descent of the Standing Rock Nation, and so any opportunity I have to speak to our Native kids and talk about, you know, what's on their mind and the kind of work that we're doing at the legislature that is actually pretty unique to—to the times compared to history. And so Columbia Heights has been well-represented in the last couple of weeks, and I think you have a lot to be proud of. As the Chair for Education Finance, I really want to focus on the classroom. I want to focus on the students, I want to focus on the teachers, and when I hear that an EL teacher has 44 students, and—what did you say, two-thirds of them are not English-speaking? All of them? We really are not doing a service to our students, and again, just as the teacher said, we're not trying to point fingers, but we're trying to figure out—we know where we went wrong, but how are we going to correct that? Oftentimes, when people say we need small class sizes, mandated class sizes, and I look around at our schools and I'm like, we could do that, but do you even have room to spread them out? That's next to impossible. So what are some other options? So I really want to look outside of the box. I want to listen to the people that are doing the work, the hands-on work, and hear what kind of solutions they might come up with and how we can—if we can't fully fund our schools, how can we do it to the best of our ability? We can address, I think, with the surplus, the cross-subsidy, our EL cross-subsidy and our specialized cross-subsidy. We know that when a kid comes to school and their tummy is growling, the last thing that they're gonna be able to do is to put information into their head, and they only get crabby or—I know I get crabby before—I have something to eat. And so looking at how we can provide those meals to the students that—that would like them, doesn't have to be everybody, but what we can do to, you know, really support their minds and their bodies as well. And then we know that transportation is a very high cost, drains the general fund most often, so what can we do to supplant and support those sort of things? There is a myriad of issues that we have been hearing about, that I have heard for years, and so my policy chair, Senator Swazinski, and I—Senator Swazinski is also a retired teacher. He taught social studies for 30 years, I believe, and so between the two of us, you know, having been teachers ourselves, we really do want to make the difference so that not only are the students learning, but the teachers are enjoying their job. We hear about the shortage of teachers and recognize that there are thousands of licensed teachers in Minnesota. We don't have to necessarily go outside of Minnesota to try to recruit. We want to look and see, why are those teachers not in the classrooms? And what can we do to bring them back, to make it a joyful profession, a noble profession, a profession to be proud and respected for? And so we have four years, Senator Swazinski and I, and we've been hearing just a myriad of bills across the board and look forward to putting together some good policy, some good funding. The governor just came out with his education plan. I haven't had time to sit down and really go through it, but I know that it is very robust. It is looking at all aspects of education and look forward to working with the House and the governor to make sure that we, at the end of this session, are really doing the best that we can for our students. And if at any time you have ideas or thoughts on what we could do to make that difference, I am always happy to hear that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Senator Feist, or Representative Feist, are you next, and we'll do questions at the end.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Sandra Feist. I was first elected in 2020, just got re-elected for my second term. I am a mom of two, so have two kids in the K-12, fifth grade and seventh grade. I am on four committees. I'm Vice Chair of Public Safety. I'm on Education Policy. I would have been on Education Finance too, but it overlapped with Public Safety, and I really wanted to be Vice Chair of Public Safety, because I'm very focused on juvenile justice issues. I'm also on an Economic Development Committee and Judiciary, because I'm an immigration lawyer, and I love the lawyer committees. I have very exciting—I was gonna email the math teacher, but I'll just tell you, I have a very mathy answer to your problem—your dilemmas. So I'll—I'll talk about my mathy answer to how we can address this. So I am very excited to be working on the issue of compensatory revenue and fixing that formula so that when we get free meals, that we don't screw up education funding. And a big part of that is looking at ELL. So there are two ELL tie-ins. So the first one is that we need to figure out what is better proxy to determine the number of compensatory students, and one option is to look at ELL numbers and add that to the formula, and so that's something we're seriously considering. And so that means that the more ELL students you have, the more funding you'll have. And actually, just today, I was looking at a list of what percentage of students in Columbia Heights generate compensatory revenue that is not covered by the Medicaid direct certification, and it was like 23%. And so I think we can make that up if we do ELL, high-mobility numbers, and then just boost the formula a bit. So—I think that the number of ELL students you have should give you more money to then have enough money to support all those students. And then the second thing is we're looking at just—we're looking at all of compensatory revenue, and that also includes what are the acceptable uses for those funds, and there are a couple of—or—I mean, a lot of the acceptable uses relate to ELL students, and so I think by making sure that list is focused on those students who have the greatest need, I think more money can make—can go to support those students. So I could get even more mathy with you. I have your email address. But anyway, I'm super excited about compensatory revenue this year. I am also, as you may have noticed on—when I went viral inadvertently this week on social media, the menstrual equity bill, requiring schools to provide free period products for students, grades four through 12, to address the issue of chronic absenteeism, which you were talking about, due to period poverty. So very excited about that, working on it with Senator Swazinski in the Senate, and just really excited. It's a student-centered bill. Students came to the legislature and asked for it, and we are responding. The Minnesota Dream Act currently is there just for dreamers. I would like to expand that to also include other types of humanitarian immigration status that a lot of kids find themselves in in Minnesota, temporary protected status, asylum seekers. There's all sorts of like parole things that you can be in for very long times, so there are a lot of Minnesota residents, maybe some of your students, I would imagine, who are not currently eligible for in-state tuition, and I hope to change that. I'm also working on a bill to—this one's kind of boring, I'll skip that one, but if you're interested in the Minnesota Youth Council, let me know. I mean, it's not boring to me, but in the interest of time. I am, again, going to be introducing my universal FAFSA bill. We've added some funding to it. We've also worked during the interim to add some more equity-focused language to make sure there are no unintended consequences, and that is a bipartisan bill. Senators Duckworth is going to be working with me again on that in the Senate, and what other states—I believe there are seven of them now—have found, both very red, very blue states, like Alabama and New York, think this is a good idea, and California. When we require students to all complete the FAFSA form for high school graduation, the number of FAFSA completions goes up dramatically, and also the number of low-income students who go directly onto higher education increases meaningfully. So—and it's like, how many things can you do to like dramatically impact the opportunity to like dramatically impact the opportunity gap that don't cost that much money? Not many. I have a bill that's very complicated, and I don't quite know what to do with it, both politically and practically. But it will impact you, and one day it will pass. And that is to address youth interrogation, both in the law enforcement setting, but I'm cutting it in half and just focusing on schools. Because there is an issue where students are questioned without notification of a parent, without counsel, and then statements they make in school to an authority figure are used against them in court criminally. And students waive their Miranda rights about 90% of the time. So in reality, youth don't have the right against self-incrimination unless we make them. So I have a bill to address that. It's not very practical. But I would love all of your input when I introduce that. I'm just updating it from last year. But it's an important issue that we need to be talking about and address. And lastly, just relating to that, I work a lot around juvenile justice issues. A lot of the bills that I'm working on involve funding, and that funding would be available to schools. So looking at truancy, after-school programs, just extra supports for at-risk youth, restorative justice initiatives. So just a lot of my bills relate to school because I want to address that school-to-prison pipeline and just the fact that a lot of kids who are struggling in school end up in the criminal legal system unnecessarily. We can support them at school and then keep them on a good path. And I will leave it at that and happy to be here.
Thank you, Representative Feist. Representative Kegel?
Hello, everyone. So you guys are very well represented with education. I am one that is not in the education realm. I am not on any education committees. I chair a committee called the Sustainable Infrastructure Committee, which is really looking at policy around our resiliency, sustainability for our physical infrastructure in the state. And with that, there's a lot of workforce development that's going to be coming along. You know, we have a unique opportunity here in our communities that we have like one of the only manufacturing sites for electrolyzers, which if anybody knows what electrolyzer is. Electrolyzer is actually what they use to make hydrogen fuel. And so it's, we're in really cool times right now because there is so much investment in our clean energy infrastructure and making sure that our communities are resilient. And so that is going to be, the kids that are going to be producing electrolyzers are in these schools right now. And so we want to make sure that we're, you know, kind of gearing these kids to some of these fields that are going to be in demand. And in demand for a long time. I believe the IRA funding is over 10 years. IIJA is five. And so some of the kids leaving high school right now could easily go into the trades or, you know, become employed in some of these infrastructure projects and get really good careers out of it. So I want to just make sure that that's being encouraged as well. And if you want to talk to me about electric school buses, I can answer questions about that too. But I'm really just here to listen and make sure that your voices are reflected up at the Capitol. So thanks.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments for our representative? Yes, Mary.
All right. Thank you all for being here and for doing all of the work that you are doing for our, especially for our students. You know, and one of the questions that I have heard a lot from community members and from staff, and even in some ways from students, is the proposed legislation that's there, and we're talking about increasing funding and all of those things. When do you anticipate that some of that funding will be able to like come into our schools? And, you know, especially will we be seeing it anytime soon? Because as some of you may know, but for sure, Senator Koenesch knows, we are getting to that time of year where we have to decide cuts. And we are a scrappy district, and we do the best we absolutely can. And yet we have, you know, really, really high EL needs that, you know, and it's not just our district. I know other districts are also dealing with that too. But will we see any of that funding anytime soon to, in order to sort of stem some of that tide that we're going to be having here?
Like they both look at you.
So I do have a bill. It's Senate File 8. And it is a bill that would do some one-time funding to go into, it would basically be backfilling the general fund for ELL cross subsidies, for special ed cross subsidies. We did have the universal lunches in there to kind of backpay that. But that, most of the money that schools get is federal dollars. So we wouldn't be backpaying federal dollars. It has to be Minnesota dollars to Minnesota dollars. And then the cost of transportation. I hope that we can come to an agreement with the House and the governor to do that. I think I have spoken with a couple of different districts and asked them, you know, how much of a difference would that make? And at one district, there were literally people with tears in their eyes. And so I am trying to get that one done. We've heard it in the Senate, and I hope they're going to hear it soon in the House. I'm still trying to convince the governor to do that. It would, well, at one time, it was about a $500 million price ticket. But if we take out the lunches, I think that was like $180,000 or, I'd have to go back and look. But I'm still hopeful that we can do that so that as you near that time of deciding who you can staff up, who you can keep, who's going to get that pink slip, that less and less of those pink slips are going to go out knowing that you have money in your coffer. And then, of course, at the end of the legislature, we will be looking at how we can add additional dollars to the school districts. But I think it's a, for me, it's a great way to say thank you very much for going through what you've been going through these last couple of years, as well as trying to keep yourselves afloat, knowing that some of these different programs were not fully funded by the federal government and therefore draining the general fund. I think it was little Miss Anita that said she'd like to go on field trips. And I've heard that from other schools as well. So that is one thing I am hopeful for. I don't want to make any promises, but I haven't stopped planning on that. And as I said, the governor's legislative plan is very robust and is really planning to put a lot of dollars where it's going to make a difference.
Thank you, Laura.
Can I just jump in to, just regarding the compensatory revenue? That's tied to meals, and meals, I think, is going to go individually. And so we should have the compensatory revenue fixed, which I know is a big, like, unknown, before like budget time. So just wanted to provide that context to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Laura?
I actually just had, I guess, a question. I mean, as far as funding is concerned, we definitely really appreciate whatever you can add to the formula. But I've often heard that it would be, it would be great if we knew how much sooner because we have to make the decisions before we know how much. And that can be kind of, that can be kind of unnecessary, especially when a lot of people are, you know, really doing the best they can, and it can be very stressful. So that was one question. The other one is, has there ever been any move to at least index to inflation? Because there is a huge, the inflation rate has gone up and everything has gone flat. If we were just indexed to inflation, we would not be, we would not be looking at having to borrow for short-term, for short-term borrowing to pay our bills for that little gap there. You know, things like that.
I think, we are hopeful, again, can't plan, but we are hopeful to come to that agreement between the governor and the House and the Senate as quickly as we can and to pass our final omnibus bill so that you know what's coming your way. And I do believe the plan is to index that formula to inflation so we don't, so we really know what we're working with and you all know what you're working with. And it's not this, you know, this number that never meets your needs.
Well, yeah, I mean, if inflation is, you know, is 1.5% and you get a 2%, what are you really getting?
Right, right.
No, it's, yeah. Thank you.
Yep. Other questions? Can I just say one more thing?
Yeah. Representative Kegel, I just want to say also, I know you are doing a lot of work on Highway 65 and making that safer, considering it's one of the most unsafe areas in the state, if not the most at one point recently. So I know you're doing a lot of work with that too. And I just wanted to make sure that we called that out because that is incredibly important as our, our schools are really close to Central and they, we have, you know, lots of families and community members are traveling that area. So I wanted to call out your work on that too.
Well, and it's really exciting too because with the IIJA funding, the infrastructure, the Infrastructure and Jobs Act, or IIJA. But there's, there is money in there for active transportation, safety upgrades. We also, University Avenue, Central Avenue and University Avenue will also be getting our T L Bus Radford Transit that will terminate up at Northtown. It'll go up Central and then cut over on 53rd and then go north on University, terminate at Northtown. And so we have like just this really cool opportunity to really change the way our communities look physically, adding sidewalks and making sure that we're thinking about all modes of transportation. And so I actually was just talking with one of the council members from Columbia Heights today on some of the connecting communities pieces and active transportation parts of the IIJA and how Columbia Heights could possibly take advantage of it. And so, you know, I'm really hoping that through the work on my committee and whatever process we create that comes out of there, that we're looking at a holistic picture of infrastructure and have stakeholders engaged in the process of planning communities and that we're purposely looking at land use. And, you know, here in our area, it's more redevelopment than development. And so, you know, making sure that we're keeping in mind redevelopment as well when we're looking at how we're planning our communities. So, you know, it's really kind of cool. I'm really excited about it. I know, like, I'm kind of a geek when it comes to transportation and infrastructure. And so I'm super excited. So if you guys have any ideas on how we can engage, I think, engage youth in some of this thing, in some of these decision-making. I know when we did the Pell study along 65, you know, that was one thing that was really successful is engaging the community. And so we need to make sure that folks who are using the system are the ones that are there at the table making decisions. So it's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I've got a couple. Save myself for last. Just, I appreciate your comments, Representative Feist, on the compensatory funding. And that is critical in our district. And we have a high, high-need students in a high-need district, so we cannot afford to lose any compensatory funding. We're, for me, I'm thrilled if we have free meals for our kids or, you know, otherwise funded meals for our kids. That's so important, and it has been great the last couple of years where we had that. But we also have to make sure that we're not missing out on the funding that we need as well. Also, I think, and I know we've alluded to and some of the other members here on the board have talked about the timing of funding, and specifically as we had our teachers talk about our ELL challenges. The way that we're set up now is that we have, we have had this large influx of ELL students. And we'll get that funding next year because our funds this year are allocated, and they're not at all accounting for the students that we're getting in after the cutoff of when we're reporting that. So while we're appreciative of that funding coming in, it's, the lag in that is very challenging for us as a board to be able to staff appropriately when the funding isn't here. And the other comment I want to make, and I, please take this for all the consideration, but I know we keep talking about a budget surplus, and I mentioned this last year. I truly believe that there is no budget surplus while there are unfunded mandates. It's just undistributed funds. And so while we have unfunded mandates in both special education and English language learning that is affecting our district here in Columbia Heights by millions of dollars, that's not a surplus. That's unfunded mandate dollars that hasn't been distributed. And that's important to us to be able to operate, to better serve our students. We talk about students being engaged citizens, and we talk about the careers and the paths that are available to them. And we have to be able to have the funding to help them learn and get there. And we have to have the funding in order to be able to do that.
Keep saying that it's a, it's not a surplus. It's a lack of, you know, we're underinvesting. And then part of that too is that it's, we have a one-time surplus, the structural surplus is $5 billion going forward. And so, you know, we really have $12 million of one-time money, one-time. And so we have to figure out how we're going to use that and invest it wisely. So I think that's where like one-time projects, where capital upgrade projects, innovative things that you can do to lower costs, like energy audits and consumptions, just, you know, finding ways to capitalize on some of that one-time funding. And like I said, electric school buses.
Well, and I think as our district, we're doing what we can between all the solar panels that we have on the roof. We have a biodigester at North Park School for Innovation that's taking compost from the cafeteria and generating energy. So we're trying to do those things. We are being the best stewards that we can with the dollars that we're given, and it's still not enough. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you all very much for coming. We really appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Oh, it's so cool. We need to go back to the Park Innovation School. Can we have another tour? Because Arizona's, I've never seen this.
Oh, there.
And that's something he's.
Thank you. Mr. Maraz would love to have you. Yeah, absolutely. We'll reach out to you.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Next, we have our summer programming informational item Next, we have our summer programming informational item with Director Tuckrell, Director Godfrey and Director Stenckel.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. This evening, I come with my two colleagues online to present our plans at this point about our summer programming. While the snow is piled up outside, it's always fun to come and speak to you all about what we can anticipate in June, July and August. So our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. All of our core values will be represented in this evening's presentation and they're all also aligned with the Columbia Heights Public School Board of Education equity statement. This evening's presentation is informational to the board. There are no governance questions. So the goal of summer programming, we've got multiple goals, to provide reading and math interventions, opportunities for high school students to earn credit, multilingual language learner support, opportunities for fitness, service required, services required by individual education plans, opportunities for enrichment, high-quality childcare and mental health supports. With community education, we'll start with our youngest scholars. We'll be doing the early childhood screening, which helps students to have that screening done prior to the start of pre-K three, pre-K four, Mini Adventures or kindergarten. Early childhood screening is required for those programs by state statute. We'll also continue to provide our preschool childcare program called Mini Adventures that takes place here in our family center throughout the summer. Summer ECFE programming is uncertain at this time as we're having a number of staffing changes, so those positions will be posted. And if we have appropriate applicants, then we'll be able to provide ECFE this summer. The school age programming through community education, summer adventure club childcare program, just like each summer. This year, we'll return here to the family center, so all of our childcare will be located here at the family center. Blooming Heights Schoolyard Garden, we'll continue to have our high school interns. Those are paid positions where the students learn all, not only about gardening and cooking and nutrition, but they also work with the summer programs that come to Blooming Heights. We'll provide two sessions of driver's education this summer so that we've got safe drivers on the road. We'll also be able to do environmental camp for grades two through five. Environmental camp is provided through our twenty-one CCLC, Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center grant. Our tentative plan is for that to be July tenth through fifteenth. And then a change this year with our summer sampler for grades four through six. This is a partnership between community ed and activities. And in the past, it's really been focused on the athletic activities, but this summer we're looking at adding speech, robotics and some of the other activities. And a change also is that rather than having it in the late afternoon or evening, we're going to have it follow right after the summer encore time so that students can be enrolled in summer encore at Valley View and then also at CA. And they can go right from there to the programming that will take place there on that site. And then at two-thirty promptly, parents will pick up. Or somebody will pick up the children that's appropriate. Our activities and athletics, again, this is a tentative plan because it does depend on having the appropriate staffing for it, but we're looking at continuing with strength training, football, basketball, dance, swim dives, soccer, lacrosse and volleyball. As we cement the staffing for these and perhaps for others, this list will, will continue to develop. And then for adults, because of course in our district, all our learners, we'll have adult enrichment senior programs this summer as well, both in person and on Zoom. And then also our adult basic ed program continues year-round and that's with our partnership with Metro North Adult Basic Ed. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Tara Tuckrell.
Thank you, Kristen. Thank you. Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. To continue on with our summer opportunities, I'm going to talk a little about summer encore. Summer encore is what other districts might call summer school, but we improve it. We have a twist on it. So we really focus in on the academics, literacy and math, but then we really spark that joy with hands-on learning, fitness activities, art, environmental. We've been on field trips, a lot of hands-on learning to support that literacy and math learning. This year, our session will be in June. It varies depending on funding and staffing. And this year, as we are braiding various funding, we also have COVID funding that ends June twenty-twenty-three. So our goal is to have it in June and use up that funding for summer. Summer encore will be for incoming first grade through eighth grade, so students who are currently in kindergarten through seventh grade. And as mentioned earlier by Director Stenckel, it'll be June fourteenth to June thirtieth at Valley View and Columbia Academy. And the June twelfth and June thirteenth will be used as prep and PD days for staff who are hired for summer encore. And this also supports that turnaround from the school year as we end the school year the week before. We will be running summer encore from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty. And this is a slight change from previous years as we have summer academy happening at the same time. So Columbia Heights will be a host for summer academy, which will take place up at the high school in Highland. And as many of you know, Forty-Ninth Avenue tends to get very busy during that time. So we shifted the times a little to support transportation. And registration and opportunities for students really does depend on staffing. And after talking to many staff around, I think we'll have a great group this year and we're excited to invite our students. We're going to continue our community partnerships with summer encore. We have the Summer Reads Vista, which supports our adventure club students. And then we continue to collaborate with the recreation department as well as the public We're also offering some other academic programs throughout the summer. The high school offers an advanced placement boost for various classes for students entering AP classes in the fall, and that will happen in August and more information will be provided to families and students as we get closer. We have a wonderful collaboration with Saint Anthony New Brighton Public Schools. It's an integration program in which we offer writing and math classes with staff from their district as well as ours and students from both districts coming together. We do a lot of hands-on learning, a lot of working together, field trips together. It really has been a wonderful opportunity over the years. We will continue with credit recovery for our students and that's with nine-sixteen supporting it. And that starts in June and goes throughout the summer. And then as mentioned before, North Suburban Summer Academy will be hosted in Columbia Heights and their dates are June twelfth to the thirtieth. So Forty-Ninth definitely will be busy this summer. And with that, I'm going to pass it to Director Godfrey to share about special education.
Thank you. So summer programming within special education, as, as you've heard me mention before, our students receiving special education services are general education students first and so they'll, they'll have the opportunity to interact with all of the slides that were before this. However, we will offer extended school year services that will be provided per IEPs during that encore programming. We'll have early childhood special education offerings that will both be within encore programming and home and community visits. And then early childhood special education evaluations will be completed throughout the summer and mental health support will be provided by school staff through social workers and school psychologists.
And with that, some amazing pictures of this past summer and we're excited to see all the students this summer.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions for the directors? Jessica?
When it comes to the school age programming, I mean, here, there's still a lot of uncertainty related to staffing and that'll kind of help direct registration. But when generally, do you expect that information will go out to families about those opportunities?
I can chair for summer encore and then Kristin, if you want to jump in about the others. After presenting tonight, our hope is tomorrow to share this information with staff and get the postings. Everything's ready to go. So working with, in collaboration with the Human Resource Department, we will start hiring right away tomorrow and get the applications going. And our hope is by the end of February to get information out to families so they have enough time before summer to plan for summer encore.
Great. It does seem that, you know, camp registrations outside of the district seem to be, you know, pushed earlier and earlier and earlier, so families are making a lot of decisions earlier. And we have such fantastic programming in this district. I've seen firsthand through my own children what they've been able to have access to. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, we're able to, to push that information out to families as soon as it's practical to do so.
And then for community education there also, we follow the same, our postings go up tomorrow as well. And so in the next week or two, we should have a clear sense of who has applied for those positions so that that, obviously, it, it completely depends on staffing. If we get the staff, then we can do the programs and then we promote shortly thereafter. So I would say, you know, mid-February, we should be in a good position to be able to determine in terms of our early childhood programs what will be offered.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Michelle?
I was wondering if transportation was still being planned for summer encore like last year?
Yes. Thanks for this. Some of the leftover COVID funding, we are able to provide transportation for students living within our boundaries right now that are receiving transportation or within our schools that are receiving and outside of the walk zone for Valley View and Columbia Academy.
Okay. Thank you.
And we are requiring that students be enrolled in our district to participate in our summer encore program. And then that summer sampler, though, is so students that stay after for that, there won't be transportation home from that program.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for rebranding quote-unquote "summer school." It has such a bad connotation, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to our presentation about the Minnesota State High School League Foundation Form B two grant application resolution with Activities Director Jake Henderson.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, thank you all for having me. New members, it's nice to meet you in, I guess, the setting we're not actually meeting each other, but doesn't that sound like a really fun Form B two grant? But I'll tell you a little bit about it. This is just an informational item tonight and we will take action, or hopefully take action on it at a later date. The Minnesota State High School League Foundation B two grant is available and we would like to apply for it. Previously, we did apply for a grant from the Minnesota State High School League Foundation already. We received that grant. This is a second one that they're offering throughout the year. So I'll tell you a little bit about the foundation, a little bit about the grant and then what we'd like to use it for. So the foundation was founded in two thousand and seven. The Minnesota State High School League Foundation is a nonprofit association serving both public and private schools, created to complement the Minnesota State High School League by providing support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts. Minnesota State High School League Foundation's goals are to promote the growth of high school students through participation in valuable extracurriculars. So the actual B two grant is for either leadership initiatives, safety or trans, and/or transportation. And the grant is up to five thousand dollars. Now, there's some things that we can't do with it, so when I said transportation, I saw Superintendent Stenvik's eyes light up. We can't use it for regular competition transportation. Doesn't necessarily say what we can use it for, but what we would like to use it for are some leadership initiatives that, that we would like to do. So we'd like to apply for the grant. Crystal, our activities facilitator, and I, and coaches and student athletes would like to attend the Women's Coaching Symposium offered by the University of Minnesota on April twenty-first. We had a handful of coaches that participated in that last year and we'd like to offer that to more coaches and student athletes as well as, I didn't go, Crystal went and I would love to attend that as well. We'd like to purchase, the, the boosters helped us out and we purchased twenty of these books. I was able to give them to all of our head coaches. I'd like to purchase twenty more of them. This is my copy. It's got a lot of notes in it, but I find it as a really good resource for year-round planning for coaches, building relationships, et cetera. And then we'd like to purchase twenty copies of this team captain leadership manual as well. Some really good tools that I've vetted and, and other A Ds have vetted and I think it'd be, it'd be fantastic to provide for our, our students and our coaches. Some other things we'd like to do with it is provide training with Safe Sport. We do that to all of our new coaches, but this is a thing that we wouldn't have to pay for it out of our general, general funding. So that would be exciting for us. And then finally, Crystal and I met with the Search Institute. They're from Minneapolis Twin Cities area and we'd like to provide some student leadership training opportunities with training that they would actually put on. We did a little bit with coaching with the Search Institute and some developmental relationships last year with our coaches and would like to bring that to some of our student leaders, up to forty or fifty of them. So the, the grant, like I said, is for up to five thousand dollars. This would exceed five thousand dollars, but I, if we were to get up the five thousand dollars, I would ask the boosters to possibly help us out. And I think total, if we were to do everything, I think it was like six thousand, seven hundred. So some exciting opportunities for our coaches, our students, our activities staff. And so, yeah, I will open up to questions if you all have them.
Great, thank you, Chair. I apparently have all the questions tonight, so thank you. So I'm curious, so the, you said coaches, you want to encourage the coaches to go. Does that also include the robotics team or some of those other teams that we have, have always been a part of our, our activities, but maybe have not, they don't, they're not as flashy as the football or basketball?
Yep. Yeah, so when we, whenever we have coaches meetings, it's coaches, advisors, everybody. And so we, we have started doing a annual one and then I just do a Zoom meeting with seasonal coaches. And so when I say coaches, yeah, it does include that. And then our activities leaders, which is a group that's somewhere around forty-five, it's all of activities. So we have knowledgeable represented, we have robotics represented, we have the musical represented, we have football, we, we have all of those sports and activities represented there.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I'll just make a comment, too, on that. I've heard from some of our high school students about, who, who have attended the leadership lunches that have been happening and some of the comments that I received is that they thought it was really great, that it was activities and athletics, that musical and robotics and, you know, one-act theater is included along with the, with the teams. And so the students have really appreciated that opportunity to learn and grow together and to learn leadership skills and are excited that it's all-encompassing of the different athletics and activities we have. So thank you for that.
Yeah, of course. And it's been a, it's been a really cool opportunity. I am a huge fan of bringing food into the equation and I just think that, that really offers an opportunity for just people to share, share life there and, and grow community. And so the boosters have given us a little bit of funding to offer lots of different types of foods, actually. So the kids are excited, like, it's, it's a good meal.
Other questions?
I have a quick one. Well, maybe not so quick because I'm new. I'm going to use that for a while.
You at least have a year with it, Julie.
So this would be extra funding for, for this type of, you know, training and coaching. What do you currently do? Because I know, like, my daughter was a swim coach for, for a while and she did a lot of online-type coach, you know, things. What, what are we currently doing?
Currently for specific training that all of our coaches have to do. When they're a new coach, they are given a code to do Safe Sport training. And so that came out of all, all US, no, I'm blanking on the, the name, but any, any US sporting organization, if you're a coach for that, you have to be Safe Sport trained. And so it's not something that's required by the high school league, but it's really safety training for, it, it really teaches, you're, you're not going to be alone with students ever. You're not going to use communication one-on-one with students ever. And then some safeties for the coaches and then just some tools for you to be able to call or contact if you have any suspicions of any wrongdoing, I guess. So there's that. And then Minnesota State High School League, if it's a Minnesota State High School sanctioned activity, they have to go through concussion training, speech and things, don't have to do the concussion training. And then they have to go through a coaching course where it's why we play. And so it's not necessarily about winning. The goal is to win the game, but it's to grow people and, and students. So that's Minnesota State High School League specific. And then we offer some specific training just on logistics of our activities department every single year and then every single season, too. And then coaches do have opportunities to join their, if it's, if it's a Minnesota State High School League sport, they have opportunities to join their coaches association too. And there's other trainings that are available to them and I get messages about those and then shoot those off to them.
Okay. Thank you.
And can I clarify on that, too? So we're currently doing quite a bit for the coaches and, and advisors and, and leadership and that funding is coming out of our general fund.
Correct.
And this grant would then cover some of those costs, which then would free up those funds, the general grant, the general fund for something else that, so I think it's helpful then to, to supplement. So it allows us to do what we've been doing and expand that while using those funds in other ways as well.
Correct. Yeah. And the booster, like I said, you know, the, the boosters have helped us out, too. They, they purchased twenty of these books that I was able to give to, to head coaches. I'd love to expand that into captains and leaders, too. Give them some texts because I know they'd love that, too.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I guess just a comment, like, hearing it's a one-time five thousand dollar grant and there's all of this that you're able to do with that. I think Mary would said earlier, we're kind of scrappy. I think this is a very good example of like using our partnerships with boosters and looking at, you know, what we're already funding through other sources to kind of put together a really good program for, for our students. So that's, that's just fantastic example of that, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, it's a, it's a grant that I think, well, at least a handful of last few years has not been available. I don't think they had the funding for it, but our Tri-Metro Conference is also going to use it for some training or they're going to apply for it for some training as well. And so I'm hopeful that it's there every single year. I don't know that that is a hundred percent the case, but I'm, I would plan to apply for it again.
A great stretch of five thousand dollars. We got to say that.
Yeah.
Can I ask one more question? So is there only one grant and all these schools are trying to get it?
No. You know, I may, I don't think I have that in front of me. No, it's, it's not just five thousand dollars. No, it's, it's a few hundred thousand or two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. No, it's, it's a few hundred thousand, or 200, or $250,000. Don't quote me on all that, even though I know that's going in the notes. But no, it's, it's an opportunity for up to $5,000 per school.
Great. Thank you. And this will be brought back to us as an action item to pass the resolution at a later meeting.
Correct. Yeah, February 14th, I believe.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to our policy first reading. And so we have the policies out for first reading. These are available on our website for comment. These have gone through the policy, the Subcommittee on Policy, and then are now available for public comment. They are Policy 410, Family Medical Leave Policy, 415, Mandated Reporting of Maltreatment of Vulnerable Adults, 417, Chemical Use and Abuse, 504, Student Dress and Appearance, 515, Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records, 524, Technology and Internet Acceptable Use and Safety Policies, 708, Transportation of Non-Public School Students. And so those will be, again, out for the next two weeks, I believe, for public comment. They're available on our website. And then they will come back at our next meeting for the final reading, or second reading. Any questions or comments on the policies?
Mueller, I would just like to say that working on these policies has been pretty fantastic. It always is. But especially knowing that we worked really hard on the student dress code policy. And that had, you know, as one of our goals, we always want to be elevating student voice. And that definitely came through. And we were lucky enough to have a student join us and talk about that process. And, you know, I'm, I'm really excited about that. And I'm looking forward to doing that more often.
Yeah, absolutely. Agreed. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question. As a, as a new board member, is there, thinking about how we sort of like, how do we get information on how we contextualize some of these policy changes, right? So reading through some of these things, it's very clear that some of the language changes are being directed by changes to state or federal statutes. Other things are, you know, our own language as a district where we have more discretion on. Some things might be driven, as Mary suggested, by student voice in a meeting. So as we're, as we're looking to sort of the second reading of these, how would we get more information on what's driving some of those changes?
Yeah, that's a great question. I might defer to Superintendent Senbick on some of that.
Yeah. By and large, if there's legislative update, legisla- statute changes, sometimes it's a legal reference change that's driving it, by and large. And then the conversations at the committee, whether it's providing student voice and a sub-subcommittee providing that information. But I could probably put something in the update.
Yeah. And I'm thinking, because on the website, there, are they the redline versions that are on the website? Or just the after the subcommittee has gone through them? That's, I think, what's
They're highlighted.
Okay.
Where the changes are.
So the, the changes. And I do think what I have found, like, policies that have substantive changes, like the one that Mary was talking about, as a Subcommittee on Policy member, she did bring that to the board as a conversation item, just sharing that there was, you know, deeper dive into, into that policy as well. So I think that's something that the Subcommittee on Policy can talk about during, when we do the first reading, is talking about some of that as well, if there are more substantial changes to a policy that isn't just statute-driven.
I just would add, so a lot of these changes that we made were really mundane, like spelling. We had M-I-N and stat. And now we have to have Minnesota State statute, like, listed and all of those things. And we're also mandated to go through and, and just make sure that these are still up to date. What are the changes? And that's where you see at the top, and this is mostly for families at home. You see at the top of our, our policies, how, when were they first created? When were they reviewed and how often? And it's, it's a lot, and there's a lot of changes. And I think it can be, it can be really hard when you look at it and go, but what are we really changing? Like, how much? So I really appreciate that question. And I'm happy to, you know, and I know Laura has been on policy for a while, way longer than me. But, you know, we're always happy to, to talk about that more, too. So.
Sure. I think just being able to understand, to differentiate between what, what has been discussion for kind of policy changes that are driving our strategic plan forward and what are substantive changes that are being driven externally would be really helpful.
Superintendent Senbick?
We do have the, like, the agenda, the one page where, for the Subcommittee Policy that I think might be helpful to include where it shows, these are substantive changes per legislature. These are non-substantive, and these are kind of other and outlines. So we'll provide that as an example.
That would be awesome for the full board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, I know I'm not on the policy Subcommittee, but we actually had some discussion also about whether or not we mark it as revised or reviewed.
Yes.
Okay. So review is usually nothing substantive. You know, I mean, it's, it's pretty much the same one, maybe cleaning up some language, maybe adding a reference, you know, that, that was in there before. And we did, actually, we were reviewing a lot of the policies with, through that equity lens as well and making sure we were very inclusive. And, and so, I'm sorry, policy is kind of my thing, so I'm kind of like missing this.
New experiences, Laura.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. But I liked my policy. Especially because I, every time I look at them, I'm like, oh, okay. Like, I'm already seeing stuff I want to fix in this one.
Great. All right. Thank you. Great questions. Appreciate that. Anything else on policies? All right, we will move on to our action items. First, we have Director Hennekenz with the Columbia Academy Kitchen and Serving Area Remodel Bids.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Senbick. This evening for action, seeking approval to move forward with the Columbia Academy Serving Area project. This was presented at the previous school board meeting as an information item. And Construction Results was the lowest responsible bidder, the base bid of $571,853. Seeking approval to move forward with that project for this summer.
Great. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the Columbia Academy Kitchen and Serving Area Project, awarding that bid to Construction Results Corporation in the amount of $571,853?
So moved.
Motion by Julie in a second.
Second.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion?
Super excited about it.
Yeah.
And also, like, can I just, we only hear from Director Hennekenz one time tonight? I don't know if I can, I was unprepared for that.
We waited till the end of it.
Well, congratulations.
He got to have dinner.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted to note for anyone that is in the room or public that might be watching that we did have more substantial discussion around this at the last meeting. And so I think, and that applies to a lot of items that eventually come to action before the board. And I know as somebody who followed board meetings before I was a board member, if you miss a board meeting, sometimes it can be confusing as to why there isn't necessarily a lot of discussion on some of the action items. And that's why, because there usually has been more discussion at previous meetings. So.
Great. Thank you. And I, I'll, I'll add one more comment to that. I think as Jessica said, that as a board, we don't vote on things the first time we hear them. So this is, they're usually either presented at a work session, but more substantial things are presented to us at a, at a meeting prior so that it is on camera. And if you want more information, you can go back and look at that meeting as well. So you'll, yes, that's perfect for people who might be watching at home. You'll see that throughout the year for us, that these conversations are less because we've talked about it previously. I just really repeated what you said, but I was just Thank you.
But you did it in such a chair-like.
You paraphrased so perfectly.
Any other discussion? All right. Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Director Bennett and Director Hennekenz for the Discontinuance of Programs and Positions Resolution.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Senbick. Back on January 10th, Director Hennekenz and I presented the resolution on the discontinuance of programs and positions for the 2023-2024 school year. This would just direct the District Administration, the Superintendent, to start looking at efficiencies in the district as we head into staffing process in the spring. So tonight, we're here seeking approval of this resolution.
Thank you, Director Bennett. I will read the resolution and then ask for a motion in a second to move that forward. This is the Board of Education Resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has brought unforeseen expenditures not covered by the CARES Act funding. And whereas the Special Education Cross-Subsidy required the School District's General Fund to cover almost $4 million for this obligation last year. And whereas the English Language Learners Cross-Subsidy continues to be a yearly approximate .8 million cost, requiring the District's General Fund to cover this obligation. And whereas the voter-approved operating levy has remained the same per pupil since its passage in 2005, which is over $1,000 per student below the metro average. And whereas the school district budget is based on declining projected enrollment. And whereas the financial condition of the school district is dependent on federal, state, and local revenues, and these have not been sufficient to cover the total cost of ownership for the school district expenses. And whereas the transportation costs are projected to increase. And whereas the school district has an obligation to balance the budget on an annual basis. And whereas reductions in expenditures and school finances may include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of programs if necessary. And whereas a determination must be made as to which faculty and staff contracts and programs may be terminated and not renewed, and to which licensed staff may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits in affecting discontinuance of positions and programs. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, Columbia Heights, hereby directs the Superintendent of Schools and Administration to consider the discontinuance of positions and/or programs to effectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures. Make recommendations to the School Board for the discontinuance of positions, curtailment of positions, discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs in order to balance the school district budget. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Laura in a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? Laura?
I just wish we would have read this at the beginning of the meeting. Just making an observation.
Thank you. I, yeah, this is, I was going to say the exact same thing. Because this is, it's absolutely gutting to have to read this after we had a staff member talk about how difficult it is because of funding. And we had our representatives, and thank goodness they were here, they could hear that. And they also need to hear this. So I'm hopeful that we could maybe send this to them as well, because they need to know this is where we're at. And this is stark. And this is, it's painful. It is so painful to make these decisions. So.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I just have one more comment, too. I do like the, the fact that when we do do this resolution, that it's very year-specific. So, you know, it isn't just something that we use every year. The idea is still the same, but the rationale before it, every year is more refined. And I really do appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, since this is a, Julie, did you, I thought I saw your hand. Mary, since this is a resolution, will you call a roll, please? Yes. Maderis?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Hool?
Aye.
Granlin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you, Director Bennett. Next, we'll move on to board topics. Does anybody have any board topics?
I have something. I was actually, like, this week, trying to fit into, like, that new role of liaison, right? And I kind of ran into, like, a roadblock where I kind of just didn't know what to do. I was wondering if there was a way to kind of get more specific in writing, like, somewhere where we could just find those roles and just kind of help us to know, like, a step-by-step of what we're actually supposed to do in those roles. You know, when we step into that and reach out to people and, and just know what we're supposed to do when we represent the board outside of this room.
I think that's a very good point. And I think that that's something that we, as a board, have to create. I'm not sure that that's there right now. I do know that we have a document that we created a couple of years ago with the liaison and, you know, what that looks like in terms of, you know, being present at certain things. So we can share that. But I think maybe worthy of another conversation as well, of making sure that we are fully prepared for new board members to provide more direction in, in that liaison. So
When you get on the board, you kind of get used to just talking to people. So we've just kind of been networking, right? So you kind of talk to the last board member, you know. So I think it's just been word of mouth, which is great. So I've been learning a lot through doing that. So.
Yeah, I think that's definitely something that I can take a look at as well and look at the document that we have to see if we can bolster that up and then provide some additional information. And then talk about that in another meeting.
Thanks.
No, thank you for bringing that up. I think it's great, you know, again, having new board members is, is really helpful in terms of looking at, you know, the way we do things or what we've done and where we can do better and provide more information moving forward. So keep bringing these ideas and asking these questions, because it's helpful to those of us who've been on the board for a little while to remember what it's like to be a new board member and some of the questions that we might not have reached out to answer.
I mean, I love an adventure. Don't.
I appreciate it. So for all of you, definitely ask the questions. And if there's more information that you need, let us know so that we can always seek to improve as well.
Up until a couple of years ago, we really didn't have any type of, we, we just had basically the way we always did, the way that things were done. And it was just kind of passed on, I don't know, by osmosis or something. So you really didn't know, because there wasn't any place to say, oh, I need to know this, and this, and this, and this. You know, so we're, that's going to be, I think, a living document. We're going to constantly keep working on it. And, you know, we had something come up. If you're assigned to a committee, we really need to make sure that you're invited to that committee prior to the date. Low bar. Especially if you're, like, brand new, you know, getting that information out front. You know, it's, it's an oversight that I, unfortunately, I let down my, my mentality about.
It was not your fault.
No, actually, it was. It actually was my fault. And I do apologize for that.
Thank you.
Great. Like I said, we're, we're learning, and we're going to do better every time. So. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. Other board topics? Mary?
I just wanted to make mention of, we are closing out the quarter slash semester this week. And, you know, I can't imagine my house is the only one that has a little bit of extra stress as we're nearing that end. So just a quick shout out to all of the wonderful educational staff. And that means everybody, everybody who's working really hard to support our kids and scholars right now, you know, either at home or even, you know, especially during school day. And just, you know, really, really grateful for everybody, especially during these high-stress times as we're getting into, like I said, the end of that quarter slash semester. And also as we get into everybody's favorite testing season coming up here. So, you know, just show each other a little bit more love this week especially. So.
Thank you. Any other board topics?
Any other other?
Any other other for Mary? All right. Hearing done, we will adjourn the meeting at 8:42.